The Town of Berlin. Country charm at the center of Connecticut.
Okay, welcome everybody. Call this Town Council meeting to order Town of Berlin Tuesday, March 15, 2016. If we could rise for the Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. Roll call.
Councilwoman Campanelli?
Here.
Here.
Kaczynski?
Here.
Councilwoman Letty?
Here.
Councilwoman Peinessa?
Here.
Councilwoman Rochette?
Here.
Councilwoman Rossell?
Here.
Now you have a form.
Great, thank you. Okay, first up, we have a proclamation for National Public Health Week. So let me, Debbie Ralseth, go up to the podium here. Proclamation, whereas the American Public Health Association has proclaimed April 4th through April 10th as National Public Health Week. And this year's National Public Health theme is Healthiest Nation 2030 and focuses on rallying around the goal of making the United States the healthiest nation in one generation by 2013. And whereas for over 20 years, the annual celebration of National Public Health Week reminds us of the fundamental role that our own state and local health departments play every day in the health of our communities. And whereas the town of Berlin, together with its neighboring towns of Newington, Rocky Hill, Weathersfield, receives quality public health service through its regional health department, the Central Connecticut Health District, now in its 20th year of service. So now thereby be resolved that I, Mark H. Kaczynski, hereby proclaim April 4th to April 10th as National Public Health Week in Berlin, Connecticut. I encourage all our citizens to join me in this celebration and in acknowledging the critical role of public health in prevention and helping individuals and communities to achieve and maintain good health. So, there we go. Thanks a lot, very much. I hope we all stay healthy. And, yes, absolutely.
Say a word or two?
You may.
I'm Pat Checo, and this is Ray Jarama. And unfortunately Karen Wysocki isn't with us this evening. On behalf of the Director Health, Charles, yes, Charlie Brown, the great staff, the wonderful board we have, I would like to thank the mayor and the council for acknowledging the importance of public health in our lives every day. And when we get to that week, I hope you will all stop and think not only about what public health silently does for you every day with your clean water and being smart enough to move the outhouse away from the well, but also that you will take on something for yourself and your community. Whether you start walking, whether you start looking at having a better type of nutrition, whether you decide to get involved in the community with community gardens, or the terrible epidemic of substance abuse that is affecting us all, that we all work together as a team and a community so we can achieve better health for all by 2020.
Thank you, Mayor.
Great. Thank you very much. Thank you.
Whoops.
There you go.
Thank you very much.
Thanks. Okay, moving on, we have the audience of citizens next. We have Cynthia Pavano has signed in. If you didn't, that's okay. But Cynthia, you're first up since you signed in. Welcome.
I have lived on Meeting House Road since 1971. This town has treated everyone living off the Chamberlain Highway like dirt. Empty stores in the plaza except for Bellas and the Nail Place, cartons paint out of business, and now it looks like planning and zoning will not allow Kensington Gardens to have a gift store as well as a garden store. There has been a gift store there since I moved into town. I don't know why, if this is the truth, that they didn't take action years, 40 years ago. Chris Ellison at the Kensington Gardens has been very kind and helpful, especially to seniors and widows, doing arrangements of the cemetery, delivering plants, shrubs and trees, and even delivering Christmas trees. With only a garden center, you'll have to compete with Home Depot as well as Lowe's and Stu Leonard's in Newington, by the way. Start thinking about the residents off the Chamberlain Highway who pay plenty of taxes in this town. Basically, we've been left out the entire length of the Chamberlain Highway as far as businesses are concerned. Aren't you sick and tired of empty stores and lots the length of Farmington Avenue? And by the way, only one grocery store that has taken us for a ride. The economic development in Berlin is a disaster. In addition, park and rec are treating senior men and women like dirt as well. Increasing rates, only allowing 18 haulers to play on one side of the golf course Monday, Tuesday, and Thursday, when we have been able to play and make times between 7:00 a.m. and 9:00 a.m. before this year. By the way, most of us pay for golf carts as well, plus an additional dollar surcharge. I would like to know, with the exception of the golf course, what other income does a park and rec get from other than our taxes and the golf course? I want you also to know how I was disrespected and rudely spoken to by Mr. Kevin Murphy last Tuesday's Planning and Zoning Commission meeting. He came off the podium 20 minutes before the meeting, began, and said, "Who are you?" I told him I was Cynthia Pavano, and I lived at 57 Meeting House Road for the past 45 years, by the way. No one else was in the audience at the time. Then he asked, "Why are you here?" I could have answered, "I'm not allowed to speak of this meeting. I don't need to answer any of your questions." But 79 years ago, my mother taught me to be respectful and truthful. So I said I was hoping they were going to grandfather or amend the zoning to allow a gift store at Kensington Gardens, where there's been a gift store as long as I've lived on Meeting House Road. He responded in a loud voice, "That is not going to happen." I said, "I'm sorry to hear that." No vote was taken regarding this issue. Had they already decided privately what they ought to rule? They even called Mr. Ellison and asked his reaction to a lengthy report from the Corporation Council. His reply was, "He couldn't react. He never saw it or was ever given it." Seniors are treated poorly. I guess the only thing you care about is getting our taxes. I am begging this council, please, for God's sake, take action.
Thank you very much for those comments. We'll try and look at some of those things and see what we can do if there's any issues there. Any other citizens wish to speak? No, hearing none? Okay. We'll move on to our consent agenda if we could. So, want to have a motion on the consent agenda?
Sure. I would like to make a motion to accept items 1 through 6 as they are presented before us tonight.
Second?
Sorry. All those in favor?
Before we vote?
Don't discuss.
Yeah, before we vote, can, I know that we had talked earlier, and I mentioned something to Brendan about maybe adding one or two. I had a list of a few things, adding a few things to the consent agenda. I didn't know if you guys had had a chance to talk about that or think about that. We have a lot of items on the agenda. It was just one or two. You know, I gave them a list. I said, "You guys can choose which ones, if any."
I saw the list just right before the meeting.
Yeah.
I think we should run through them quickly.
Okay.
We'll do them quickly. I don't think any of them are, most of them are not going to take much discussion, so.
All right, fair enough. Thanks.
Okay, all is in favor of the consent agenda?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. Thank you. All right, on to, we have a public hearing, so this time I'd like to call this public hearing to order. And, am I reading the?
You're going to read the first one for me?
Yeah, oh, that's right, yeah.
Do you need another copy?
I got it. I got it, thank you. Public hearing held on March 15, 2016. I hereby convene the public hearing for the Million Dollar Bridge Improvement 2016 appropriation and bond ordinance. The ordinance, which is the subject of this public hearing, is available to the public and may be obtained at this meeting from the town clerk. I need a motion. Is there a motion to read the title of the following proposed ordinance and to waive the reading of the remainder of the ordinance incorporating its full text into the minutes of this meeting? So take a motion.
Sure. I'll make a motion for an ordinance appropriating $1 million for bridge improvements 2016 and authorizing the issue of $1 million of bonds of the town to meet said appropriation, impending the issuance thereof, the making of temporary borrowings for such purposes.
Okay, is there a second?
Second.
Great.
Is everybody in favor?
Yes, everybody in favor of this bond ordinance?
Oh, just not reading the whole thing.
Right, yeah, that's it. Well, in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, so moved. The motion passes. And we could, and so we pass, and if we can take comments from the public now? Yes. If there's any comments from the public on our bridge improvement bond, we obviously will work on some of the bridges in town and make sure they're safe and updated. Hearing no public comments, I'll call the public hearing on the Million Dollar Bridge Improvement 2016 bond ordinance closed. Thank you very much. On to new business. Topic number one. Denise?
Yes, the Kensington Congregational Church on Percival Avenue will be holding their community social fundraising event for the third annual this June, June 11 of 2016. This is their third time doing the festival on the hill. They've requested again to close Sheldon Street from the intersection of Percival Avenue to the Reeves Center down at the parking lot. There'll be music, food, family activities, open to the whole Berlin community. And this year, they are also planning to have a road race as part of the festivities. And it's anticipated that there may be anywhere, I know last year was very well attended, but it may even, but even 1,200 to 1,500, which is double last year with the road race and everything. And they are asking, since it's necessary to hire police to assist in closing the roads, setting up the barricades and things such as that, they're asking a waiver of any and all fees associated with the police support. It's estimated that that would cost between $1,800 and about $2,800 to have the police support necessary.
Great, thank you. I guess the road race fits in well with National Public Health Week. I know it's a little bit later, but we can start getting healthy later in, later this year. What about a motion on that?
Sure. I move to approve the request of the Kensington Congregational Church to waive all fees associated with having Berlin police support at their second annual block party event and road race on Percival Avenue Saturday, June 11, 2016. The approximate fee to be waived is $1,880 to $2,880.
Great, second on that?
Second.
All is in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Topic number two.
This is a discussion, we have a guest speaker here this evening to discuss the Mattabasset sewer budget assessments and also to discuss how the Middletown buy-in to the district will assist in keeping some of the fees down. Art Simonian, who was our prior Public Works Director, is now the Executive Director at the Mattabasset Sewer District, and he is here to present this agenda item.
Good evening. Back to my old stopping grounds here. Art Simonian from Mattabasset District. I have our chairman of our board as well, John Dunham, who is from Berlin as well. But we're here to talk a little bit about the Middletown Assessment Funds. When Middletown came in, there were some funds that were allocated to Mattabasset District, and they were put into a reserve account. There were some questions about how those funds were going to be held and how they're going to be utilized for the constituent communities that belong to the Mattabasset District. So I'm here to talk a little bit about that, that process that's occurred over the last two or three years, and also about our budget process, which we just did recently complete. And I'll talk a little bit about how the assessments are calculated, just so Berlin understands that Berlin has, as you're all aware, three water sewer districts, but the assessment for the sewers is actually applied to just the Berlin Water Control District. They in turn send out invoices to the other two districts for their proportional share of the sewer usage. But as far as the Middletown buy-in fee, which is what it was kind of classified as a couple of years ago, in April 2013, the Mattabasset District Board approved the amended charter allowing the city of Middletown to come on board. That charter was also approved by respective constituents as well, New Britain, Berlin, and Cromwell. And as part of that $13 million buy-in fee, those funds were put into a reserve account. And they're actually being held in that reserve account and utilized on an annual basis to help offset the assessments for New Britain, Berlin, Cromwell, and MDC. The assessments are actually broken down. You'll see in your package, there's actually a spreadsheet that shows, kind of looks like this. It shows the breakdown each year of how much the assessments are allocated. The board voted to do this over a 19-year period to coincide with the $80 million Clean Water Fund Loan Project with the payments for that. And this year, Berlin is receiving $195,000 credit on their assessment. Over the course of the next 19 years, Berlin will receive $2.2 million in credits from that $13 million reserve. Part of that reserve is held in an account that has to be kept for assets against the Clean Water Fund Loan. We're required to keep about $5.5 million over the next approximately five to seven years. Once those, that loan is paid down further, then those rest of those funds will come back as credits again to the constituents. So the 19 years was decided for by the Mattabasset District Board, and again, it helps offset those Clean Water Fund Loan payments. In addition, the Middletown funds do not get applied to them as a credit. They have to buy, use those funds for the other constituents. Middletown does not receive any credit on their assessment, and that is shown in your spreadsheets as well, if you want to look at the budget assessments. Just speaking about the budget for Mattabasset, we go through a process where we meet with our finance board, and then we actually present it to the full board of directors for approval. This takes about two months to complete. And our finance board, after reviewing the budget a few times, we've actually, were able to reduce it down from last year by about 43 percent. Most of that is due to the fact that we had a substantial amount of income last year from the Clean Water Fund Loan. It was about $19 million. And we also had to pay a $10 million Clean Water Fund initial pay-down payment. So our budget went down quite a bit, but now we have to start paying back the Clean Water Fund Loan, and we don't have as much reserves to use. So the budget did actually, as far as assessments, go up a little bit compared to last year. Berlin fortunately is in a pretty good position. Your budget actually went up the lowest out of all the constituent members, about 9.8 percent. And most of that is probably attributed to the fact that we had less rain in the last couple of years, plus you've done some II work too as well, which has probably reduced some of your infiltration. Some of the other towns have saw larger increases because they are still dealing with more I and I. On your spreadsheets that I did for the budgets, you'll see how Berlin's assessment before the credits was 2.234 million this year, after the credits of 195,000 and 178,000 of other credits, which are from sludge income and septicage. Berlin's net assessment is 1.86 million, which is about a 9.8 percent increase from last year. So we did try to keep as many things as low as possible. There is actually about $140,000 in line item reductions this year in our budget. But some of the major driving forces, our electricity went up about 10 percent, and also our Clean Water Fund payments, we have to start paying that down. That's about $5.5 million a year. That's a big driver of our budget. And obviously, we have some contracts and health insurance that have gone up a little bit as well. But we did take a pretty hard look at some things and had some capital improvements that we put into the budget that we're neglecting for a number of years. And this budget, I think, is fairly responsible and relatively low increase compared to previous years.
So with that, I'll take any particular questions about the assessment for Middletown or the budget itself?
I just have a quick question, Art. I'm just trying to learn about this whole process. When I visit other, and I mentioned this to Jack Healy, when I visit other towns' websites and look at the sewer rates, it's a huge calculus problem. Every town charges different rates for sewer disposal. So I'm wondering if you guys are having a discussion how to make that uniform for all the customers involved in all the different towns?
The formula that Mattabasset uses is also a complicated formula. It's actually a combination of capital and also a five-year flow average. So the capital part of the budget is based on the reserve allocation to each of the towns, and then the operating part of the budget is based on your five-year average flow. You may say, "Well, why is it a five-year average flow?" Because they used to do it every year, but because of the cyclical natures of weather, people saw their, the towns saw their budgets going up and down, so they decided to do a five-year average. Mattabasset is still one of the lowest operating plants, not only in Connecticut but in the United States. Our average cost for treatment is about $1.10 per thousand gallons. And the national average per survey that was done a few years ago is about $2.06. So even being in New England with probably some higher labor costs, we're still pretty close to about one-half the national average, which is, I think, pretty respectable.
Okay, thank you.
Thanks a lot. Any other questions?
Mayor, just a question.
There you go.
The distribution, or the, not the distribution, just how that is applied to Berlin, that is applied to the water control, and then the impact flows down to the other water divisions within town?
Yes, it flows down to them through, the way I know we used to do it when I was there, it was based on the water usage of the other districts compared to the water usage overall, proportional that sewer bill to there. But I think now there's actually a study, a consultant's being hired to take a look at that allocation as well.
Correct. That's what's taking place. Thank you.
Anyone else? No? I think we're good, Art.
Okay.
Thank you very much for the information.
Thank you for having me.
Thanks for coming. Appreciate seeing you again.
All right. Have a good evening.
Thanks. Great. No action needed necessary on that one. No, just, let's see, where are we at here? Number four? Three, I'm sorry. Before we go to three, I'm sorry, I've been a little bit distracted by what Ms. Pavano said. So what I'd like to offer, I just, if you'd like to meet with me, I'd love to meet with you and, you know, and we can go through some of the issues. I mean, you brought up a lot of different issues, so I think, you know, probably too much to discuss here this evening, but I would like to do that for you, and, you know, we can talk over and maybe get you some different, maybe facts that you're not aware of, or, you know, and we can get, what else is on your mind? You have a lot on your mind, which is good, which is good. We like to, we like.
I'd love to know. I have this season disorder. Seasonal disease.
Yeah, well, we can, we'll go through everything.
I mean, you know, at least the public should know.
Yeah.
There's a lot of rumors going on.
Well, you know, that's the problem with a lot of this stuff. A lot of the stuff you brought up, there's always a lot of rumors about different things. And, you know, it disturbs me, you know, to hear you say some of those things, and certainly, I mean, I don't think anybody in town, certainly nobody on this council or in the town government, I mean, we certainly want to help our town, whether it's business-related, whether it's the school system, whether it's the seniors, you know. So we really do strive to do the best we can, and I think sometimes that's what happens. It's just false information. Once that false information, I think we all know, once the rumor gets started, or once the newspaper publishes one thing that's maybe incorrect, or maybe flows from a rumor, it's very hard, that gets, you know, as we know, that gets to page one. And when the correct information might come out a few weeks later, it gets on page 10 somewhere, and nobody sees it. So, you know, that does happen frequently. I've seen that on many issues, you know, we've already been through just this year alone, so. But anyway, I wanted to offer that to you. If you could maybe just leave, either call Denise or leave your phone number tonight. We'll give you a call and go through some of those issues, okay? Because, you know, we want to set the, for you, set the record straight for you, okay? All right, great, thank you. All right, on to our agenda number three. Denise?
Back in January, the council passed an ordinance appropriating the $1,300,000 for the replacement of Hubbard Elementary School roof after the fact we learned from the Office of School Facilities, Department of Administrative Services for the state that we need to have three separate resolutions also passed for the project. So this evening, we have placed these on the agenda so that they each could be resolved and passed, so that we can conform with their requirements.
Okay, great, thanks. So we'll go to the first resolution?
Okay. I move to resolve that Berlin Town Council authorizes the Berlin Board of Education to apply to the Commissioner of Administrative Services and to accept or reject a grant for the replacement of the school roof at the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School.
Okay.
Read them all? Just keep them?
We can separate, please.
Okay.
Separate, so.
A second?
Second on that, right. And I obviously, excepter, I would assume our resolution is to accept the grant. Is that?
You're going to send it to Board of Ed right now.
Are we going to send it to them?
That's what you're doing.
Oh, we're just sending the resolution to them? Okay, great. So all those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries, resolution one.
Okay.
Resolution two.
I move to resolve that the replacement of the school roof at the Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School is hereby assigned to the Berlin Public Building Commission.
Second.
Okay, great. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Resolution two is on its way. Motion carries. Number three.
Lastly, move to resolve that the Berlin Town Council authorizes at least the preparation of schematic drawings and outline specifications for the replacement of the school roof at Richard D. Hubbard Elementary School.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries on the third resolution.
Thank you.
Thank you. Number four.
The State Department of Emergency Management and Homeland Security, back in 2014, established a school security competitive grant to assist municipalities in Connecticut with completing some improvements for school security infrastructure. Berlin was a recipient of one of the grants. The grant totaled, the grant itself was $155,942.52. It's a matching grant, and this is a reimbursement grant as well, so that the funds have to be expended before we can be reimbursed. This is basically a accounting mechanism, so that the funds have to be transferred into the state and federal grants revenue and site and building expenditures account. Jim and Eva are both here, too.
Well, we would love it to be $155 million. It's actually $155,000. I apologize.
Good hearing.
Gave you used to big numbers.
Maybe a little, maybe a little mistake.
Yeah, right.
Move that decimal point, a couple zeros on here. Okay, great, thank you, Denise. Motion?
Okay. Move to appropriate the school security competitive grant funds totaling $155,942.52 to state and federal grants revenue and site and building expenditure.
Second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Number five.
This is an agenda item to award the contract for auditing services. For many years, we had auditors, Bloom Shapiro, and in the, at the end of the audit this last fiscal year, their contract came to an end, a new request for proposal was prepared, advertised, two firms submitted, and the committee members met with both firms and interviewed them and decided to keep the amounts of the bids from being revealed until after the process was done. after the process was done. The committee felt that PKF O'Connor-Davies was rated higher than Bloom Shapiro, and they voted to award the contract to them. When the bids were opened, they were slightly higher than Bloom Shapiro's price, but they included perhaps, and that's still in the works, some of the specialized audits that had been recommended by the audit committee and also been, being followed on by the finance director. So this is a move to award the financial auditing services contract for three years to PKF O'Connor-Davies in the amount of $47,500 for year one and two, and $48,500 for year three. Jim is here to discuss it if needed.
I don't know, do we need more info? Or are we comfortable? Well, go ahead. Say a couple words, you're here, you're all dressed up, you might as well stand up and talk.
I'll just quickly say that we included two of the counselors, Councilor Luddy and Councilor Evans, who sit on the audit committee, were included in the process of interview. And I've talked about this throughout the budget process, and I just want to clarify on the fraud risk assessment services. We initially, we're going to go out to bid for all of the things identified in the fraud risk assessment. We haven't done that yet. The costs of those will not be completely eliminated with the new auditors, but we believe we can achieve some efficiencies with having the independence of brand-new auditors, and so we believe we'll be able to keep those costs lower, which was a big part of the decision to move with PKF O'Connor-Davies. Did call some references, very highly recommended. This is a big change for the town, as we've had the same auditors where their auditor predecessor firm for about 30 years. So this is a, this is a big, big change.
Great. Okay. Thank you. Anything else from Mr. Redd? If not, let's move the motion, we have a motion, a big motion.
Sure. Move to award financial auditing services contract number 2016-09 for three years to PKF O'Connor-Davies in the amount of $47,500 for years one and two, and $48,500 in year three.
Right, second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you. Thank you, Jim. Number six.
This is the item regarding the Kensington Fire Department buildings boiler that we discussed briefly, or at some length, actually, at the January 12th meeting when Jim Simons, the fire administrator, had come before council to explain some of the strategic needs in the fire trucks, if you recall. Basically, what has happened is that the boiler is very old at the Kensington Fire Department, and they had PTE Energy come in and do an analysis, which showed that there would be some significant savings if the boiler was just replaced. They decided to go ahead with it as they own the building. They went ahead with it and they had paid $14,000 upfront, and there's a loan balance through, I think it's Eversource, for $18,740.78. They are requesting that the town assist with paying this loan balance. There has been precedent for this in that the town has assisted the East Berlin Fire Department recently, or in the recent past, with a sum of $20,000 to replace, I believe it was their boiler replacement. While the fire departments own those buildings, we have our vehicles in the buildings, and also the savings in, in the electricity and other heating things will help the budgets for all of the departments as well as the town. This year, because there has been a milder winter, there are funds available in the contingency account to be transferred over to pay in full the, the balance of the loan.
Okay. Motion on this?
Sure. Move to transfer $18,740.78 from the contingency account to the fire department electricity account, and to use these funds to pay off the balance of the loan between Eversource and the Kensington Fire Department.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Stand.
One abstention. Okay, motion carries. Thank you. Number seven.
Following along in the fire service mode, the town of Berlin departments are requesting to purchase the personal protective equipment for this fiscal year. This agenda item will cover the cost of coats and pants worn, known as the turnout gear. The fire service has contacted the vendor, and they've requested a comprehensive inspection, and they had that done in December with the report delivered in, in January. They are in need of quite a few turnout gear. Each set is $2,400. They are looking to purchase 25 sets of globe turnout gear in the amount not to exceed $60,000. They are looking at the State of New York's contract to go off of as none of the DAS, State of Connecticut, had that particular item.
Okay, great. Motion?
Sure. Move to approve the purchase of 25 sets of global, or globe turnout gear in the amount not to exceed $60,000 utilizing the State of New York contract number 22123, group number 40061.
Right, second on that?
Second. I have a question.
Sure.
I don't know, Jim. I know that you want to purchase 25 sets. Have you determined how they'll be distributed to each of the houses, or is it just based on new?
No. Actually, we have a gear inspection. We have the manufacturer come in and perform a gear inspection of all the protective clothing that's in town, and then we divide that up by the amount of, or the percentage of people on paid-on call within the individual company. So it's divided up equally and then goes to the worst sets or the oldest sets. This is our annual purchase. We do this every year, and it's in, all in line with NFPA, which recommends that, or they recommend the replacement of the gear for interior firefighters, can't be over 10 years old, and it's all in line with what we've done in the past and what we will continue to do. The only thing different in the future is, and we brought up at one of the chief's meetings, is it's time to look at the actual protective clothing garment itself, make sure that that's still, because it's six or seven years we've been with this one garment, make sure that that's still where we want to be with this garment, and it's meeting all of our needs, or is there something better out there? And that'll be, that's going to probably be a good 10-month to one-year process to look at what's out there, look at what we're doing. So that'll probably be next year, we'll probably either stay with Globe or we'll be moving on to another manufacturer. But this is all in line, it's all done fairly across the board.
Dave?
So, Mr. Simons, is there any revenue capacity in any of the individual departments that cover some of these expenses over time?
This is, this is the equipment, protective clothing equipment. So the revenue that is gathered within the departments, whether it be from french fry booths or fare booths or stuff like that, go into maintaining the buildings, not the protective equipment, emergency equipment.
Another question for you. Is the inspector from the same manufacturer that provides the equipment?
The inspector-
And how do you keep a separation of their vested interest if they're from that manufacturer?
The inspector is from the manufacturer of protective clothing, and the inspection comes in and is a, it's done to the NFPA standard again, and it just provides us with the condition of the current gear. Then it is up to the individual fire company chief to go out and look at that gear for the replacement. So when the inspection is done, the inspection is done looking for ribs, tears, degradation because of ultraviolet light, and he just makes a report out that this is what should be repaired. So yes, it's done by the manufacturer. They are the expert in the field.
But there's, are there multiple manufacturers out there, and do any of the fire departments do it any differently, where they have a separate manufacturer, or someone else certified in some fashion that acts as a little bit more independent, thought of it?
As far as other towns, municipalities, I could not answer that.
Okay.
We probably could go through CROG or one of those-
CCM, maybe?
CCM, and see exactly how it's done in other-
That'd be worth a good question to ask, I think. Thank you.
Thanks, Dave. Anybody else? You're good? We have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? And motion carries. I'm not going anywhere.
The next one's his as well.
Okay. Number eight.
This is our yearly purchase of our diesel fuel. As Jim had indicated, I think, a couple of weeks ago at the last meeting, the price is fluctuating a little, it's at a low, but it's creeping up shortly, and he is looking to lock in with the lowest bidder at this point, which is East River Energy, who happens to be our current vendor for the contract for next year. Right now, I'm not sure what it is today, but it-
It's up 11 cents from what we talked about here.
Yeah, so it's, time is kind of, yeah. He'll lock it in at the lowest possible price.
Okay, great. Motion on this?
Sure. Move to award the contract for the purchase of 38,000 gallons of diesel fuel for the fiscal year 2016, 2017 to the lowest bidder utilizing the CROG purchasing consortium.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks. Thanks, Jim. Number nine.
It's also the time of year to start repaving the streets that have taken a little bit of a hit during the winter. This and the next agenda item deal with that. This is the request to award the resurfacing of the town roadways to the lowest bidder on the Connecticut Department of Administrative Services, which is Tilcon Connecticut, for resurfacing the roadways and awarding the, the bid.
Okay, great. Motion?
Move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services pricing under contract number 15PSX0228 for the purpose of resurfacing roadways and award a purchase order to the lowest bidder, Tilcon Connecticut.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Discussion on it, Mayor?
Sure, yeah.
Just, Mr. Healy, I have a question. During our budget sessions, you talked about some situations where your experience has shown going to bid may prove fruitful compared to going to the state bid. If you'd just comment whether this one was one that you might look at next year, or if it was a different category.
Good evening. Yeah, I think next year, we would, I have standard specifications I've used in the past that I would go out and, for comparison purposes, and if they were lower, go out and get bids from other companies. We have, I have found in the past that sometimes we are able to get better pricing on certain commodities better than the state can get. I don't know, I don't know if it's just that you get better contractors, but sometimes it's, it's less expensive to go that way. So next year, as part of the strategy we talked about during our sessions, we will be looking at bidding out more of these, these contracts.
Great. Thank you, Mr. Healy.
And also, David, the, the roads to be paved are on, on the website.
Excellent. I'm sure citizens are now going to be clamoring to the website to see all the roads that will be paved in the next little while. I think I saw April or May timeframes on those.
And they'll be upset when their road's not on it, but that's all right. We'll try and accommodate them as much as we can. Motion's on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? All right, motion carries. Thank you. Number 10.
In some cases, the roads are not repaved. They may be reconstructed, and again, off of the Department of Administrative Services contracts. There is one to do projects that combine pulverization and paving, which would, we are asking to be awarded to Tilcon, and the other for the milling of roadway surfaces to the lowest cost-effective bidder, which is Costello Industries of Newington.
Okay, motion?
Sure. Move to approve, move to approve utilizing the State of Connecticut Department of Administrative Services contracts, number 14PSX0218 and 15PSX0228, for the 2016 construction season for the purpose of reconstructing and paving roadways, an award to the most cost-effective bidders, Tilcon Connecticut, Inc. of New Britain, Connecticut, and Costello Industries, Inc. of Newington, Connecticut.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Number 11. Interesting topic.
Council needs to set the agenda for the budget referendum, which will be held on April 26th, I'm thinking of the public hearing, April 26th, 2016. They need to send the town budget, which has been set at $83,736,431, and the Water Control Commission budget of $5,677.95, $77,95, to the annual public hearing on Tuesday, March 29th, 2016, at 7:00 p.m.
Okay, great. So what do we have? So we have like three different motions here, right? Do them separately? So the first motion?
Okay. Move to send the fiscal year 2016, 2017 town budget of $83,736,431, and the Water Control Commission budget of $5,677,095, to the annual public hearing on Tuesday, March 29th, 2015, at 7:00 p.m.
16.
16. Jeez.
Oh, sorry about that.
2016, March 29th, at 7:00 p.m. Correction. Okay.
Second?
I'll second on that.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Yes, discussion first, yes.
I just want to say that while I will be voting in favor of moving it to the town hearing, I do think it's incredibly important that the residents of town come out and really take a look to see what's in this budget. There are a lot of capital items that have been deferred, some of which, things like our dump truck, which, you know, we defer it, we've deferred it for the past couple of years, and, and we get to a point where it's, you know, if we defer too much longer, it's going to end up costing us maybe possibly more down the road. So I just want to encourage folks to come out to the town hearing, hear what is in the budget, and then make your decision accordingly. That's all I'll say at this time.
Great. Also, I just, I wanted to also just make it clear for everybody here that, you know, although this is what we're sending to the public hearing, this may not, not be ultimately the final budget that goes to the referendum based upon, you know, perhaps what we hear in the public hearing and some further reviews of the budget. So, you know, this is just the figure we've agreed upon at this point, but there still may be some changes, changes to it before it goes to referendum. So, yeah, likewise, I, you know, nobody's really here, but hopefully people are watching it all, but, you know, come to the public hearing, come to our budget hearing and find out all about it. We really encourage everyone to be here. Any else? Comments? Dave?
Yeah, I just add, you know, certainly it was a challenging time to determine what we needed to do. Some of it's setting strategies, some of it's going to be strategy that we'll set up for coming months after the budget's over for this particular year. Example of taking care of safety needs for our schools, and certainly we'd want to have folks come out and understand that, that many meetings, many, many years ago, a meeting was held, had the concern for the safety in our schools, and there's that particular item in there that felt funded a little more than an area that had been funded in the past. And so I agree with, as I said, that we ought to have citizens come out and understand it. We'd appreciate that.
Okay. Any other comments? No? Okay, so motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, motion carries. Second motion?
Motion number two. Move to approve the following question to be placed on the ballot. Shall the budget recommended by the town council for the 2016, 2017 fiscal year be adopted?
Okay. Second on that?
I'll second.
Any discussion on this?
Can I ask a question? And I know that I missed some of the budget meetings due to- And I know that I missed some of the budget meetings due to travel, but was there a discussion around that question that we had placed on the ballot last year? And I, again, apologize if that, you guys already did that, if you could just let me know kind of the outcome of that discussion.
Yeah, we did discuss it the other night. And again, not being part of the discussions last time, but looking at that ballot, it did seem confusing for that second question. This seems much clearer than, you know, I don't, that's my opinion, but-
Okay. Just wondering what kind of everybody.
Yeah.
I heard, you know, door knocking from a lot of people that that question was valuable to them because some people weren't in favor of the budget because they thought it was too low, and they wanted the chance to express that. And I know they may not be the same folks that you talked to, but I definitely did hear that.
Yeah.
And I did mention it to more than one person.
I mean, if there's a better way to, you know, couch the question, yeah, I just, I don't want to risk confusing people. Yeah.
Mayor, you know, the last time that we took place there, I guess different people had different opinions on how to interpret the information that came back. Some folks could look at it and say, well, the no's correlated to too high and similar number of numbers. I think at the time, I talked about an if then statement, which wouldn't be feasible at this point because of the laws and the way things are laid out. The town clerk did give us some information on that. I appreciate that information being shared with us. I think traditionally we've seen when the folks aren't happy with the budget in the height of it, that they reject it. So we're hoping that this year, people understand where the budget is, and that's why we continue to encourage folks come out and understand what the budget is this year.
Thank you.
Okay, thanks. Bob, what do you, just for your way in, if you're probably familiar with what the second question was, was-
My recollection from last year is, I don't think it had a lot of probative value for anybody because it was too vague. You couldn't really conclude anything from it, so unless you were going to break it down and make it so complex, you're better off with just a yes or no.
Yeah.
That's my take on it.
No, I think pretty much, right? Consensus is that, so, thanks for everybody's input.
We'd like more people to come out and vote and not get confused and be discouraged.
Yeah, that's absolutely-
Because they can't understand it.
Right. Simple is usually better. Okay, so we have a motion on the floor. All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, that motion carries. Third motion.
Okay, number three. Move to allow any person who is a citizen of the United States of the age of 18 years or more, who jointly or severally is liable to the town for taxes, assessed against him or her on an assessment of not less than $1,000, and the last completed grand list of the town to vote in the budget referendum on April 26th, 2016.
Second on that?
Second.
Any discussion on this? No? Okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Okay, motion carries. Thank you. All right, on to number 12.
The state has the program where the town clerk's office collects $3 for each land record, and we receive $1 for the recorded, and the other $2 is sent to the state, which is then used for a series of target grants up to $4,000. We need a resolution for Kate Wall to be authorized to execute and deliver the grant application for the amount up to $4,000 for the Connecticut State Library for Historic Documents Preservation Grant.
Thank you. Motion on this?
Okay. Resolve that Denise McNair, town manager, is empowered to execute and deliver in the name and behalf of the town of Berlin a contract in the amount of $4,000 with the Connecticut State Library for a Historic Documents Preservation Grant fiscal year 2017. Upon receipt, grant funds are to be deposited in the special grant fund account.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carries. Number 13.
Start copying.
She's too busy. She's too busy.
Good luck.
As council knows, the town of Berlin is part of the Bristol Resource Recovery Facility Operating Committee. That's where all of our trash goes. Two years ago, or a little over two years ago, the operating committee changed to being just a policy board due to the fact that the arrangement with the plant, which is owned by Covanta of Bristol, Covanta Bristol, Inc. to be exact, took over the operation of the plant, and the policy board is now more of an advisory type board. There are 14 towns that have been involved with the facility for over 25 years. This is the second 25-year period that we're involved in. Basically, what has happened in the last couple of years is that as time has gone on and the original agreement that was reached December of 2014 has been in practice, there have been tweaks that have been necessary to be adopted by the participating towns. The First Amendment was last year, and I forget exactly what the First Amendment dealt with, but this is the Second Amendment. Oh, the First Amendment was as a dispute over some monies that were due. BRRFOC felt that they were shortchanged with some of the monies that were due from the original phasing out of the original 25-year agreement, and so they upped the payment to the annual policy board in that first agreement. This agreement that is now being asked to be approved by this council is because in the recent year, the 14 towns are approaching the cap that was on the amount of tonnage that the plant could accept at the price that they had given us, which was around $55 a ton. For whatever reason, the 14 towns are exceeding or getting close to exceeding, and there was a concern that if we reached the $165,000, $165,000 ton cap, that then our refuse would be turned away and we'd be forced to go to either Hartford, or there's a facility in Wallingford, but at a much higher price. A lot of negotiations took place between the 14 towns and Covanta, and the arrangement that was finally agreed upon by all of the towns was that the cap would be removed for the residential waste, and the cap would remain, or that the commercial haulers that use the facility under each town's umbrella, so to speak, would be on their own, basically, before the commercial tonnage was also subject to the lower price because of the cap. Basically, with the new arrangement, the commercial haulers have had their contracts directly with Covanta anyway. The municipalities have stepped away from getting involved in that, so it was felt that this was something that the municipalities couldn't necessarily control, nor should we be involved in that, and that we should be protecting more of our residential waste. The commercial haulers are, they know about this, they've been instructed about it, they figured that this was going to happen anyway because of the whole situation that has been happening in the trash world, and it's a long history that I'm sure could put you to sleep some evening, but this was one of the ways that the towns, all 14 towns, and that includes Bristol, New Britain, Southington, Plainville, Berlin, all of the towns that we've been partners with for many years. This was the best arrangement that we could strike with the Covanta folks to protect our residents. So this needs a resolution so that they know that Berlin is part of the 14 towns. Southington has already approved their resolution. Plainville, I believe, approved it last week. New Britons is going to be on Thursday, or Bristol's on Thursday. New Britain has already approved theirs, and it's just a long line of towns that are being asked to do it individually.
Okay. Can you get a resolution on this?
I move to authorize the town manager Denise McNair to execute and deliver to Covanta Bristol, Inc. on behalf of the town of Berlin, the Second Amendment to Municipal Solid Waste Disposal and Recycling Services Agreement.
Okay. Second on that?
Second.
Okay. All those in favor of the resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay. Motion carries. Thank you. Denise, number 14.
I almost pulled this agenda item from the agenda, as I'm not sure that we are going to be involved in the formation of the captive insurance, which CREC, the council, or the Connecticut Region of Education Council is trying to create, but I felt that as a show of support, it wouldn't hurt that we support the other towns that are still being involved. Basically, what this is, is this, our stop-loss insurance every year has been placed through private insurers, and each town does it on their own and at an amount which they're able to negotiate. CREC felt that this was something that if done regionally, that they could save money in the long run, similar to KERMA, which is our insurance cooperative through the Connecticut Conference of Municipalities and even BRRFOC. Originally, we were part of it. I was very involved in some of the meetings to hire a manager, hire on CREC's dollar, basically, and they facilitated all of the meetings. As this was taking place, we were negotiating with our carrier, with the stop-loss, and suddenly they realized that we were serious, and they came substantially down on what they were charging, far below what it looks like the CREC captive is able to get at this point. If the next year's prices are different, we hope to join the captive if it's created. It's still in the formation stage, and timing is everything, so we have to make a decision sooner than later. They may not be up and running until July, and we need to make a decision right now. The seed bunny that they're seeking to start this insurance company, basically, is coming from a grant, the Regional Performance Incentive Program that the town, the state has, so that if towns join together, it's similar to like when you purchase a truck with other towns, the state will put some money. So the towns are seeking $500,000 or $600,000 from the grant. And so this was just going to be a resolution in support of all of the towns seeking that grant. I don't see why we wouldn't still be in support of the towns seeking the grant, even though we may not be one of the towns in the captive insurance this year. We may in the future, and it would be a nice thing to know that we supported them all along.
Doesn't hurt.
Okay. Makes sense. Motion on this?
Okay. Approve the resolution in support of the Regional Performance Incentive Program project proposal and authorizes the town manager Denise McNair to sign all necessary agreements and take the necessary actions to allow for the town's participation in the program.
Second?
Second.
All those in favor of this resolution?
Just have a question, Mayor.
Yes, go ahead.
It doesn't appear that this will then commit us to particular funds going forward. This is just to ask that they grant those funds and that in the future, you know, we're not, the rate we're getting isn't as competitive as what they're getting, we might be able to shift depending on the timing of it.
Correct.
Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of this resolution?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Abstain.
One abstention. Okay, great. Motion carries. Thank you. Town manager report?
Just briefly, I just am happy to report that Timberland is open, and it opened last Tuesday, as a matter of fact, March 8th, which is the earliest that I can ever remember. I'm not that old, but I do think it's been the earliest ever.
Yeah.
And this week isn't as successful as last week, but last week was very busy because the weather was cooperative. But if you recall, last year, I believe it was at the end of April that we were able to open, so this is a real bonus. And we're not the only one in the area, but I'm putting in a plug for Timberland. Also, I just want to remind people that the budget hearing is earlier. It's March 29th at McGee, and it will be in the gymnasium. So if there's anyone watching on TV or here, it's in the gymnasium rather than the auditorium. So that's just a reminder.
Denise, will there be, we should make sure there are signs, because I'm-
Yes.
Typically people will go right into that.
And we'll put someone near the door so that, because they're having play rehearsal, and so we'll make sure that the folks are directed to the gymnasium.
Yeah, it's better than we're originally going to, I think, with the change of location. Figured that at least we could find them at McGee, you know, so much to find them. Direct them to the right place, yeah.
We're going to have provisions for seating?
Yes.
They're going to set it up.
Just the one bleachers on the left.
They're going to put chairs.
I'm sorry, I was just going to say, it's like the eighth grade.
Yeah, the ceremony. They put the chairs, yeah.
Yeah, promoting.
Probably have more than what we got.
Yeah, right. Whatever it is.
For all the people that come. Well, maybe.
You never know.
You can always hope a lot.
Hopefully people come. Let's hope they show up. Any special committee reports?
Yeah, I'll just add on that, the townwide hearing, that, yeah, there's that door that goes directly in and just can direct folks there. And I appreciated the clamor and in a positive way to accommodate everyone, and I guess I'll publicly thank the men's league that gave up their game that-
Those of the basketball.
I want to thank them for doing that, kind of weighing it out between the kids performing and them playing a little ball. So my apologies to the gentlemen, but thank you so much.
That's good. Any other reports? No? We're good? Counselor Communications? What do we have?
Nothing to add?
Anything to add? Anything to say? All right. Hearing none. We'll move on to acceptance of our minutes on the March 1st meeting. Make a motion on that. We have enough people here to accept it.
Okay, I'll make a motion to accept, make a motion to accept the March 1st, 2016 meeting minutes.
Second on that?
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Abstain.
An abstention. Motion carries. Okay, great. Thank you. Okay, now we're going to move into our, make a motion to move into executive session.